I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 2nd, 2021 work session, official time is 5:00. I'd like to call this work session to order. If we can get approval of agenda?
No boo, chairman.
Motion is second?
Second.
Second, all in favor of I? I have today's work session, proposed animal service ordinance revision. Commissioner Wood, you asked for this work session, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you at this time.
Okay. Welcome everybody for coming today. There are some copies of the proposed ordinance and the changes on this front table. Hope everybody's had a chance to review it and then we get through it today on the work session. But I have some questions myself on the part of the abuse and neglect, maybe dog and cop fighting, you know, it's not being addressed in there, animal bestiality, and also some of the exemptions portion of the exemption. Had a couple citizens in the audience that had questions also. I'm gonna open up to anybody that would like to address any of the other concerns that I just, previous ones I mentioned.
You would like to come forward with a concern for this work session? For the record, can you give your name and address for the record?
Okay, it's Ricky Yarborough, 864 Old Highway 11, Gray. And after reviewing this, I have questions about section 14-25. Is exemption for hunting dogs? There's, I've read all the way through the whole proposal, there's no exemption for large animal guardian, livestock guardian dogs, and I would like that added to this 14.25. Because I have seven livestock guardian dogs that run with my cow herd, and under provisions, they're not exempted.
Would that be at 14-26, I imagine?
Do we have anything considering service dogs?
I don't think we have anything considering.
Unless they're, you know, not on the property, I'm not sure what you're asking us to do. If they're off the property, that would be a different matter.
Well, they might go off the property.
Okay, I'm not clear on what you're asking.
Well, 14-25 says any hunting dog while under the control of the hunter shall be exempt from 14-2. Okay, well, I'm asking for livestock guardian dogs to be exempted under 14-2 also.
I guess what you're saying is your guardian or livestock dogs, they don't necessarily stay in a chain linked, chain link type fence, or on a chain or a tether.
Right, they're running loose on a 100 acre cow pasture.
Is it, is the pasture fence?
Yes.
Okay, so is that 14-2 says or fenced area?
But if they're like, I see Mr. Yarborough talking like, let's say, a group of coyotes come in and they're chasing them off. They probably wouldn't stop at the fence line if it meant to ensure that they're safe distance. I guess that's where you get that.
Can they get out of your fence?
And not all farms are fenced with page wire or goat wire, some are fenced with three to five strands of bob wire.
I think what he's talking about is, we've actually picked up a couple of those.
Okay.
Because they were just in the road.
Okay.
So, it's different if they stay on your property, but if they're just standing in the middle of the road with nothing around it, that's, that's where the leash law comes into effect. Like, if they're not protecting a cow out there, then they're off the property and there's nothing, you know. So, that's where that is coming into effect. Now, if they're on your property protecting your animals, there's not a thing we can do.
Okay.
That's, the hunting dogs is actually, they have to let their dogs loose to go hunting, that's, that's the difference.
Right, but I mean, my dogs have to stay out 24/7.
But if they're on your property.
Yeah, to stay on the property, but they might go off the property sometime.
And also 14-25 says any hunting dog while under the direct control of the hunter is exempt from all these, so in other words, they don't have to be on a leash, but they're still, and I'm thinking about coon hunting, because you turn them loose, you hear them bay down in the woods, you go get them, and sometimes I've seen hunters that find them the next morning because they've gone chasing a coon three miles away. But I think they get them back, so I think there's probably a little bit of a distinction of if a dog goes outside of a bob wire fence because he's chasing a coyote off, that's, you know, I think there's some leeway there, but
Right.
if they are not under control and they're wandering and they're standing in the road, you know, I don't know, that's, that's a tough one, because they're not, they're not doing the duty that we are exempting them from, like protecting cows if they're, if people are calling to say, hey, there's a dog wandering around out here.
So, I'm a city guy. I'm assuming if there's a 100 acre farm, your neighbors are probably something in that similar range, right? 10, 20 plus acres, maybe?
On one side of me is a 2,100 acre hunting preserve, on the other, in the other section, other people in that neighborhood are probably 10, 15 acres.
So, the stupid question is, why are we picking up a dog in the middle of 2,100 acres?
We're not. We're not.
So, if the dog was on the road in the middle of these kind of plots?
On Highway 11.
On Highway 11. Okay.
Yeah, I think the only time y'all ever picked one up, I have one.
That's the nuisance of the dog is in the middle of the road. Okay, I got you, because I'm trying to rationalize.
Yeah, since she was sitting on the side of the road.
There's nothing happening, but the dog.
Took her to the van.
Okay, I didn't get it, thank you.
But other than that.
In the road.
It's not a fine on a park or property. It's just hanging out, standing in the road.
The ones that actually go into the road is not just that, are an issue.
So, we don't have this problem.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. But it wasn't addressed in the, large animal protection wasn't addressed in the ordinance, so that's what brought the question up.
Doc, you raised your hand?
All right, so I don't think we need to mic him in chat.
Hi, my name's Doug Rubke, I live at 127 Coppergate. I just moved down here about a year ago, and I moved from Billings, Montana, basically. And I was chairman of the Animal Control Board up there, I helped to rewrite the city ordinance, the county ordinance, the Health Department ordinance, I've been involved in state bills and stuff on animals. So, animal laws are really important for the safety of humans and animals. And like this gentleman, you know, he had concerns about the livestock dogs. And a lot of these livestock people have leased land. So, these dogs would be on leased land, which isn't under his direct control, because it belongs to somebody else. So, maybe language could be put in on that. And this is the first time I've seen this, county ordinance, and like the vaccination thing is pretty limited in this language. It only says that they have to be vaccinated, basically. Where is that?
Which section you own, I'm sorry?
Let's see here. Identification and inoculation 14-7. It says it shall be unlawful for a person to own, possess, or maintain any dog or cat that does not have a current inoculation. Well, puppies don't have that until they're like three months old. And the Compendium for Rabies, which is a Department of Agriculture guidelines, saying that any dog over three months old shall be vaccinated. And the first inoculation is for one year, then after that is a triennial for three years. You don't have to get your dog vaccinated for three years. And University of Kansas, they do a tighter test. And they determine that, even if you do the tighter test, and the antibodies are still in the dogs, you still have to get a rabies vaccinated. So, maybe a little more concise language in some of these things.
Let me ask, what you're saying is we need to elaborate in some of the
Right.
Go back and elaborate.
There's federal and state, or state laws dictating that precise language.
Okay.
Let me, let me say this real quick. A county ordinance does not override a state or federal law. So, if it is a law, it is enforceable as a law. This ordinance is not going to change that. This would just be sort of in addition. This does not override any sort of law. And so, if there's a requirement that's in place by law, that law's unchanged, this ordinance is not going to override or change that law, okay?
Correct. But the people who read this ordinance should be aware of this law. There's, there's nothing in, you know, stating that these, the puppies don't have to be vaccinated, any dog over three months have to be vaccinated, and that they're, you know, you don't want
The county ordinance, so 14-7, as you all can see, is something we've had in place, it's nothing that's been changed or proposed changed. Our county ordinance is, I'm not going to go through, I don't think it would be prudent, I will do whatever this board tells me to do, but it perhaps would not be prudent to go through in our ordinances and start listing out all of the federal and state laws. That's a totally separate sort of issue than, than our county ordinances. And I think at that point, we're going to run into more problems than, than less, because we're itemizing federal law, state law, and mixing those in with what we're saying in our local county ordinances.
Right, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, but there's no stipulation.
You would like for it to say current rate, if over, over the age of three months.
Over the three months, and all dogs have to be vaccinated with the current requirements of the Compendium for Rabies or something, you know. You know, it can be worded, you know, a lot of different ways.
Okay.
But, you know, as a dog owner, you just say that I have to have
It's inappropriate.
And, you know.
Is there a generic, something generic we can put in front that all applicable state and federal laws will be taken into account, this is just a generic overview of?
That would cover everything in there.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't know how to look at the state laws.
Of the start to our code?
To find some, something on the state law, you have to know your way around the laws.
I think what you might, might be suggesting is go through the ordinance, and like, let's just say, what's 14-7 that you spoke of, you could put a reference and put the state law, easy to Google it, if it's not spelled out, you know, oh, how many every page of the state law would be in that section, it references back, you Google it, and you can find it in another location, but it would at least reference back and not be generic and vague, because I think I read Macon Bibbs ordinance, is, you know, puppies by the age of 16 weeks need to be vaccinated, so that's right at that three months timeframe.
Yeah, the Department of Agriculture, they're quoted in the Compendium for Rabies, which is kind of the main state stating that, you know, all dogs over three months. And then the AFIS and Animal Protection Act and stuff requires, you know, any dog transferring between different state lines have to be vaccinated over three months.
John, I think that, you know, here's the issue, we go to, you're going to end up taking every single section and copying the state law that requires this, if you just do like Mr. Kitchen said, it's in the state, federal laws, because every time they change, just we're going to be sitting here changing it with them. So, if we address the state and federal.
And this is just sort of one, one chapter of our, of our code. If we sort of start doing that on this chapter, where's the stopping point where we're not going through every single chapter in our entire code and itemizing, well, this is also the state law, and this is also the federal law, and then we're having to constantly update those with, you know, really on a yearly basis, which may
Would that work with Commissioner Kitchen said?
And we may already have in our, our sort of language that leads into our code that this is not, this does not preempt any federal or state laws. If we don't, we can certainly add that and reference, you know, in addition, please understand that you must abide by all current state and federal laws.
See, I'm not sure if Georgia, you can self-inoculate a dog or not. I'm thinking you have to have a vet do it. Most states have gone to that, but there's still states you can. So, you know, maybe a little more concise language on some of these things. Like I said, this is the first I've heard of this, I just moved here, a neighbor alerted me to this, and since I've been involved in animal ordinances, the language and stuff really helps, you know, make a better law.
We do, thank you.
You know, there's probably a bunch of things in here that I probably have issues with, you know, but, you know, I haven't read this very good. But
Well, and I'll say again that, so this is our, we already have ordinances in place.
Right.
This is not, we're not sort of starting from scratch as far as setting our ordinances in place.
Right.
And the proposed changes, I hope you can see on yours, are the highlighted, is yours highlighted?
The, what's that?
Okay, perfect.
That's, that's the changes that you've done here?
Those are the changes that are being proposed, requested for the board to vote on, yes, sir.
Okay. And are you going to have public meetings advertised on this then?
We've started, we had one reading on the proposed changes, and then it was requested that we have a work session before we have readings on these changes again.
So, this is basically a work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, personally, I'd like to review this stuff and get back with you before you have a first reading?
We already had the first reading.
Oh.
Yes, I've been requesting a work session since December, before I was sworn in in January, and tonight is the first work session. So, it's kind of a speed course to get everything finalized, but if we need
I'm not sure how the law reads here, but don't you have to advertise two changes?
Yes, sir, there'll have to be two readings before the vote. And we'll see how the work session goes tonight, we may need another short work session to finalize everything.
And then you'll have your first and second reading advertised that you're going to change the ordinance.
After that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Doc, did you want to come forward?
Sure. Hello, Dr. Rebecca Husted, 1787 Georgia Highway 18 East, Macon, technically. I just want to tell you guys, I really appreciate you having the work session, so that we got a chance to take a look at this. When I saw in the newspaper that there was a first reading, I was like, of what? So, that's on me for not keeping up with this. I've got a couple of questions, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not really good at all this stuff. But the potentially dangerous dog stuff, I couldn't find anything, it talks about injuring other animals. I couldn't find anything where it says injuring a person. Talks about if it kills a person in the later, later language, but I think on the second page, under 14-1, near the, on the top of the second page, it says everything about killing another dog, a domestic animal, those kind of things. So, that was my first question. Second thing is, I could find nothing in here about dog fighting. We know it happens. Milledgeville and Macon are right there, and if you talk to the officer in the room from down in Macon, she'll tell you that they have all kinds of problems with dog fighting and those kind of stuff. We don't have any reference to that in here, and my concern is when that happens, because it's going to happen, and if you talk to some of the people that live in those counties, they will tell you that those folks are moving here because it's not covered in our ordinance, and we're not willing to pursue it.
Dog fighting is not a county ordinance issue, that would be something that would be, this, against state law and our Sheriff's Department would be the proper authority to get involved.
Okay.
And for, because that's a criminal charge.
Right, so what you're saying is the Sheriff's Department is going to pursue every one of these kinds of things, how many?
I'm not the sheriff, so
Right, okay, I've got a question. How many prosecutions have we prosecuted in the last five years for dog fighting here in this county?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
No, not dog fighting.
Dog fighting?
None on dog fighting, there's one going to
Okay, so there's been 15 cases total, eight of those cases pled guilty, hang on a minute.
Just dog fighting.
So
That one.
So, you're not talking cruelty?
I'm talking just dog fighting.
Just dog fighting?
It's the one.
The, just, just one in 2020.
Okay, good. So, and then there's 15 that include cruelty, et cetera, and that we're pursuing. How many of those are completed?
Eight of those cases pled guilty, four of those cases were null processed, two of them were dead docketed, and one was to settle upon payment or restitution.
Good, so then my next question would be, how much of the work did you have to do versus the Sheriff's Department? Because I think the Sheriff's Department's got things that are a little bit more important than chasing down animals. That's what I see in other communities, is my animal control officers are the ones that end up having to do all this, this work. And what training do we have for you guys? None of that's in here. That, you know, this is important somehow. That's, that's my concern, is it's more of an expectation thing. Are we running a shelter and taking care of dogs that get kicked to the shelter? Or are we being proactive and pursuing these things? And are we giving them the tools, training, budgets, whatever we're having to do, to make sure that they can prosecute this? Because I promise you, I read the newspaper and I see what the Sheriff's Office has to do. They don't have time to be chasing down skinny horses, because I have to deal with that all the time with these guys. I've been in quarantine for Jones County for the last nine years, till you guys finally got the new shelter. So, that's my concern is, you know, how much time and effort are we giving to them and the right tools so that they can be proactive about these things? And there's nothing in here about large animals.
But, so let's, we're sort of
I know, sorry.
Let's talk about dog fighting.
All right.
Dog fighting is a criminal offense.
Right.
You would want someone that is guilty of that to be prosecuted, investigated by the Sheriff's Department, prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office, because they can put them in jail. Those are the consequences that they can enforce for it being a criminal offense.
But who does all the work?
This county ordinance, just, we can issue a fine. This county ordinance is not to address criminal offenses that will be prosecuted through our criminal justice system. And so, that's going to be, that's, there's a criminal law addressing that.
I understand.
So, that issue really wouldn't be an ordinance violation, because there's a much heftier penalty
Right.
that comes along with that. Now, if you feel like the Sheriff's Department has not done enough to
No, I'm not saying that in the least, I'm saying, I know they got bigger fish to fry.
Right.
So, you know, generally what happens when, even when I'm working with them with skinny horses, we try to find a way to take the horse and convince the person to give it up and everything else, when what we should be doing is putting the son of a gun in jail, but we don't, because we know that there's no resources to be able to follow those things up.
But that's, and a, and a, you don't go the route of a county ordinance to sort of prosecute somebody and put somebody in jail. That would be pursuing the statute, the criminal statute on the, cruelty and dog.
But we're going to do something about putting people on here, just be, just as important as attacking a domestic animal or whatever?
So, the dangerous dog section, we did not change anything to, that's what's been in place.
All right.
So, I didn't, and, and animal control, we didn't address that there was an issue. I have some specific language on the dangerous dog statute that if this does not comply with the exact statute, if the statute references injury to other dogs and people, then I'll make a note and we'll add that in there. I can't add it if it's not specifically in the statute, but I will make a note, and if it is, we'll ensure that that language is in there.
Okay, so the next thing is 14-2. You have some, within this ordinance, there are some definitions. But, I mean, I've looked at a lot of other counties and cities ordinances, and they have a lot more of the definitions about what is adequate shelter, that's always an argument. Is it a tree for a horse to stand underneath, or do they actually have to have a roof, those kind of things. There's not a lot of detail anywhere in the ordinance as far as the definitions for willful neglect. What's the difference between that and abuse, what's cruelty, what's, those definitions are really not here. And to me, after looking at some of the other communities reference, things, I think it would be important that we put a little bit more detail in there. The last thing, well, next thing I have is 14-9, abusive animals. And it comes down to, you've got some things in there, like a minimum of one year from the date of conviction that the person can't have a pet, who follows up? How, how much are we following up? Is there documentation of follow-up? How much do we follow up? Do you guys like, put it on the calendar, hey, it's been a year, I'm going to go check and make sure those folks don't have another animal?
Since I've been here.
How do we?
But we've only had a few that haven't given their animal up that
Okay, good, well, that's good to know.
More than likely, they generally, if they've been charged, they give the animal up to keep from having a pet if it's a cost of care.
Okay, good. Good, and that was the other thing, was the cost of care. So, are we just referencing the cost of care, or how are we handling that in our ordinance? I couldn't find that in here.
If there's a, if there's a civil case for a cost of care, and that's a very new statute.
Right, it is a new statute.
About a year, year and a half old.
Right.
We have had two instances where we had petitions drafted to file cost of care cases in Superior Court, and both of those instances, the person relinquished the animal.
But we don't need to have it in our ordinance?
Well, the, when we file the case, it's not an, as an ordinance violation, it's as a state law requirement in Superior Court.
Okay, I'm not a lawyer, and that's, that's, that's why I'm here, and that's what I'm asking. The other thing, we talked about field euthanasia in 14-14. I'm a big fan of euthanasia. As far as I'm concerned, every single officer out there should be able to do field euthanasia for deer and those kind of things. I don't want them to have to, to wait, you know, if the horse gets hit on the side of the road, I don't want that officer to have to wait, call that, wait two hours for that thing to suffer on the side of the road. I think it's a big thing. But it also does not say anything about what our normal euthanasia is in this county. And every single ordinance that I've seen in other counties mentions normal euthanasia, which is lethal injection, correct? And I think we do need to cover our buts with that one. It, it doesn't say anything about normal euthanasia anywhere in the ordinance.
Okay, hold, hold on, tell me again, so what are you, what are you requesting be clarified or added to 14-14?
It doesn't, I don't know whether it should be in 14-14, again, I'm not a lawyer, but normal euthanasia for an animal that's at the shelter would be, would be normal euthanasia with lethal injection solution. And it's not reflected anywhere in here, I think that, that's normal. Now, field euthanasia is deer flopping on the side of the road, horse gets hit, cow gets out in the road, officer shows up, or animal control shows up, and they have to make a hard decision. But as a, a human being, I do not want anything to suffer laying there for hours. I see it in other places where they have no tools, and thus, they have to call for a veterinarian, which may take an hour or two, the horse is flipping and flopping on the road, I don't want that to happen. I want that officer to feel free, to make the right choice. It has been chosen, shown by AVMA, and AAAP, and ABP, all these other organizations that do veterinary care, that field euthanasia, if done correctly, is the right thing to do. And it's just, it's, you know, we like lethal injection because it looks great, the animal goes to sleep, and then we don't see it breathe anymore. But in reality, it's actually slower than bullet euthanasia, which is field euthanasia. And I don't know how much we need to fill, to, to fill that in. I can get you tons of references if you deem it important to be able to put into the ordinance.
Jen? So, our DEA license does not allow us to do, what this code was referencing back in the older ordinance was if we needed to do lethal injection on side of the road, our current DEA license does not allow us to take said medicine off the premises. So, the field euthanasia you're referencing would be bullets to the head.
Right.
And that is something totally different. I know the county does not allow us to carry firearms, so that's something.
So, is that something that we need to address with the Sheriff's Department?
The Sheriff's Department is always willing to
Do the right thing.
Dispatch it whenever, if we call them, they don't have a Dispatch it whenever, i- if we call them, they don't have a problem with it. If they find it on their own, more than likely, they do it and never follow us.
Okay. So that's, that's all I'm asking, is that we need to work on that language a little bit. First of all, a lot of people don't know what field euthanasia is. It means gunshot euthanasia. And I think we need to maybe put something in there that Sheriff's Department is capable, or is allowed to, or however we do it, um, to clarify that a little bit.
Would, would a better verbiage be dispatch animal instead of field euthanasia, so there's not a confusion of whether it's an injection?
Or slash, or something, yeah, absolutely.
What, what's, what did you?
Dispatch the animal.
That may be a, a, an alternative.
Law enforcement discretion.
Put that in there in this ordinance, that would, um...
That would say that you are allowing...
...that you're giving us permission to dispatch the animal.
And right now, the Sheriff's Department comes on scene to do that. Or the owner of the...
But, uh, you know, currently, that is a violation of the, of the county rules for us to...
Right. Okay, so that's something we need to take a look at, and making sure that it's, it's copacetic with the Sheriff's Department, too. I just know, it happens in other places. I deal with this in other places around the nation, where, you know, officer's been high, hands tied, politically correct, nobody wants to do this or that, and the animal can't scream. So, they just lay there, and everybody says, oh, well, finally the vet came and put them out of misery. No, they've been suffering for hours. And, and that's what I want to prevent, as a, as a human being. Um, and then, uh, the only typo I found, fourteen dash seventeen, feral cat, needs to be feral. F.E.R.A.L.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if we were worrying about grammar and stuff while we were in here, too.
No, yes, because my office was typing mine.
That's okay.
So...
And so, then that, that, that last thing was, you know, injury, um, to a person. And I don't know if she's gonna look up the...
Because I was gonna say, you do know the Health Department is notified on every time...
Right.
Somebody's bitten by a dog.
Right.
And that's when, that's where the, because we get reports every, every, from Health Department of the dog bites and stuff like that.
Yep. And I wasn't sure how much that had to be in the ordinance, too. You know, again, I'm, I'm just, I look at these other communities that are outside of Jones County, and I see the things that are going on with cockfighting, dogfighting, all the things that I see and read about there. And I know it's gonna come to here eventually. We're a growing county. Our city's growing, the county's growing. Well, we can get water and sewer. And we're trying real hard. But by setting these proactive, sorry, and I know you work down there, so, but setting these proactive things, I guess that's what I'm asking for, is I want to be as proactive with this as possible. I want to give them the tools that they need to be able to do it. If somebody comes in here with, God forbid, animal bestiality, which is a common thing, that's one of the most common things in animal law these days. Okay, so, maybe that's, um, a situation where it's, uh, uh, gonna be prosecuted by, by the state. But, d- I, I'm just asking, as a private person, how much of that needs to be reflected in here? So that when somebody moves to Jones County, they can say, ooh, I better be careful about doing that, you know?
If they're guilty of that, they need to be prosecuted by the state, not worried about this county ordinance.
All right. Well, I understand a lot more about the process now, but that's what I really need to do. And I appreciate you guys' time and effort.
George Scoville is back.
No, I kinda wanna touch base on what she said.
Address right quick for the record.
I'm sorry, I thought I did. George, George Scoville, thirty-seven fifty-four Confederate Drive, Macon, Georgia. Did I get it?
Now we know where you live.
Okay, fourteen two on page two. This is something that has kinda bothered me for years. Under paragraph B, it says confined means in a building, pen or fenced area, or other structure built. Okay, the word built, to prevent intrusion or escape by any dog. Confined also means restrained by use of a suitable tether, which is designed to prevent cruelty to the dog, which is in otherwise in compliance with this chapter. My question is, is a fifty-five gallon drum barrel, plastic barrel, with a hole cutting into it, laying out there on the ground, made with two bro- bricks propping it up, is that considered? That, first of all, to me, is not a built structure. Now, I don't have any problem with a fifty-five gallon drum, but to me, it ought to be raised off the ground as a platform type basis, you know? That it can be an adequate structure, rather than just laying out there on the ground. I, I watched, and I'm not sure if this was Jones County, it might have been. I know it was up the road from me, and the dogs are gone. It was three pit bulls, and he had them tied to a pin, uh, tether, about ten foot long. And all the fifty-five gallon drums were laying flat on the ground. And I watched rain, cold, and I felt so sorry for those dogs, but I've, I didn't, wasn't sure if it's, and it might have been Bibb County. I'm not sure if it was Bibb or Jones, because that was in that Kings Park subdivision. The road actually faces, whatever that road is, bottom of Confederate that turns to the left there, but his driveway is, faces Confederate. But anyway, that's my question, is, is this, is a fifty-five gallon drum with a hole cutting into it, a plastic drum, uh, adequate? It's not a built structure, but what, you know, you see what I'm saying?
I don't think, I think what you're asking, though, is that the, the drum is not for confinement, the tether is confinement. So, if you're asking if a dog is off of a tether, and he's just in a fifty-five gallon drum, is that contained? No. But if he's on a tether, and he's using the fifty-five ga- gallon drum as, as a house...
Yeah.
Uh, protection from the weather, that's a different, I mean, that's not a containment. I would call that, is, is that suitable shelter and...
That, yeah, that's my question.
And that answers in, in the next, in C, right down from there, the next one. It shall be the duty of the owner, caretaker, or possess, um, to, of any animal to provide adequate shelter, food, and water, and sanitary conditions for said animal at all times. That's where that would go into place.
All right, but that's, that gets back to, is, is a fifty-five gal, is that plastic drum laying on the ground not structured or a platform in any way, is that considered inadequate?
As long as, as long as it doesn't have standing water in it, um, yes, it's per, per our ordinance, that is adequate shelter.
Now, when we show up, and I see an issue, I will address it, but...
You know, it, you got...
Most of the time, if it's flipped up sideways, or, uh, how do you say it, like? Facing toward the rain, just sits in it and not be able to drain out, yeah, that's an issue. But if it's done properly, it's okay.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, to me, that's a rinky-dink system to put a fifty-five gallon drum out there on the ground and call it an adequate shelter for an animal.
And we work every year with, uh, Anita Skinner to get proper dog houses out there. And, uh, now this year, we did get some from Bibb, but they were the ones that were built up off the ground, had the, the little awning on the front, so that one, that one's a better one, just laying on the ground.
When it's done properly, it, it can be a decent dog house.
Yeah, right.
Versus not having anything at all, um, and sometimes that's all people can afford, is to modify, you know, what they have to make shelter, um, you know, for the animal.
Well, that's all I'm asking, is, you know, if, if y'all is the enforcement, you know, do you have the right to just, you know, look, this is not adequate out here on the ground?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I've seen that, I've seen that every, not only in Jones, but other counties.
When we see something that isn't right, we absolutely take care of it.
Hold on, Mr. Scoville, I need her to come up.
Okay, okay.
If you would come forward and, and give us some data.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Galiaseau. I'm an animal enforcement officer in Bibb County, and I also live in Jones County. Um, I was trying to touch on what he was questioning about, because Kings Park is in Bibb County. Um, and we do allow for the plastic barrels. Um, ideally, we would like them, for them to be raised with the awnings and... But we have a huge problem with poverty in Bibb County, and people just can't afford it. So, I would rather see them with a plastic barrel that's, you know, at least on a tilt, so it's not collecting water, than to have one that's, that have nothing at all. Exactly, or a wire crate with, the, the house I went to the other day, a wire crate with a piece of linoleum over the top of it, and the dog locked inside of it. Um, so, we have a lot of issues that we've been working on for years. Jason's all too familiar. Um, they, uh, you've got, just have touched on a lot of the issues that I had with the dangerous dog. And, um, as far as what Mr. Montana was saying, I can't remember what his name was. Um, as far as rabies vaccinations, um, state law says that they have to be vaccinated by four months. And Georgia does not recognize out-of-state vaccinations, and they don't recognize the three and five-year vaccinations. The vets give them. I don't know how they give them, but the state law says you can't, they have to have it every year. Um, the only other thing that I really saw that wasn't, that I think needs, and I know it's a state violation, and it's prosecutable through the state, but dog fighting, we have a lot of people, a lot of our dog fighters, that have run to Bibb, or run from Bibb to Jones County. They're here. Um, they're hiding out in all the backwoods, on the dirt roads. They're everywhere. Um, as a matter of fact, you picked up Joe Grayer's dogs, the twenty-seven dogs that we pulled from Bass Road. Was that two years ago? Yeah, and he, um, he wasn't supposed to have, he wasn't supposed to have animals at all.
He took three dogs.
Yeah, he, he disappeared. He wasn't supposed to have any animals. He wasn't even allowed to have a, a cat, or a bird, or anything. He ran to Jones County and had dogs here, and, and...
The dog found, but not a guy killed.
Yeah.
But, and, and we can certainly add in dog fighting to the ordinance. The, the thing is, if they're gonna cross county lines, the state law applies in Jones County, just like it applies in Bibb County. And to really crack down on someone who's going to, to commit an offense like dog fighting, jail time or prison time is going to be much more of a deterrent than, well, we're gonna find you under our county ordinance.
Right, but not having it actually worded in your ordinance doesn't give them any kind of rights to investigate. They're...
We can't.
They're, they're trained, but...
We didn't got with the Sheriff's Department.
And, and, because, I mean, they can, they're trained to prosecute their own cases. They've been through the same training that I've been through.
Well, and if they feel like it's necessary to add it in, add it in, but that is certainly going to be a case that...
Most of the ones that we would go to would be a welfare check.
I mean, if those...
So you would be checking the tethers, the dog houses, the water. Now, if you happen to see something that is remotely dogfighting, why, back off property and off Sheriff's Park. So, we have been to several houses that are dog fighters, that we know, that there's nothing there that we can have upon just then.
And, and the definition of animal services officer, it does state that we have the, uh, the ability to enforce, you know, um, state, local laws, and county ordinances pertaining to animals. So, that right there gives us the ability to investigate, uh, as, as need be. And then if we have to, you know, pursue charges, then that's when the Sheriff's Department...
Yeah, my, my, my biggest concern with it was that if everything's getting put off on the sheriff, you both know that the Sheriff's Office isn't trained like we are. Well, and that, but that's the way it was being perceived, is...
So, the few cases that, well, the one case we just recently did, uh, Brownley called me, asked me, you know, what's your opinion on this, and this, and this? I said, hold on, I'll be there in a minute. And sure enough, we got there, there's bite sticks, there's blood on the walls, there's everything. I mean, it was a blunt case. So, then, he did his investigation. I did a, like a supplemental investigation, you know? And then they combined them, I took pictures, they took my pictures whenever they were doing the case. It is, it's a work in progress for the dog fighting thing here, because it hasn't been a big thing. They're there, we know where they are, you know, the most of them, and we keep our eyes on them.
Do other counties share their information if they know, if they have someone?
I've been in contact with season about the dog fighters.
Justin's well versed in everybody that we know that moves to Jones County. But it's not even just the dog fighters, uh, because we have a spay neuter ordinance in Bibb County. And as soon as we enforce that law on them, we go and write them citations, they pack the dogs up and move them out of Jones County. And they get, they, they quit going to Tweeds, because Tweeds has started dropping a hammer on everybody. So, the last handful have been in Bibb, they've been in Jones County.
And some of the difficulty in this, like, you know, being in Bibb, is you can't account for everything. If you get too specific, such as in the definition of adequate shelter, if you get too specific, who would have, you know, who would have thought about, somebody's gonna put linoleum on top, that we need to prohibit? You know, it's, you have to have some discretion on the part of the officer going out that can say, I don't deem this as adequate, and this is why.
Well, in, in our ordinance, it does specify, it has to have a roof, three sides, the fourth side has to have a door, it has to be raised off the ground. Um, like I said before, we've got such a huge...
Well, how do they have the barrels then, if it has to have a roof and three sides?
Because we have, it, it, well, it's, the barrel is considered a, a roof, and it's sides all the way around, and a door in the front. And unfortunately, that's...
But see, that's sort of in your discretion, because really, that's not a roof and three sides of the door.
Right, we consider it, we consider it a, a, an acceptable dog house, because if a hunter can use it, if you've gone to anybody with a hunting, with kennels, with hunting dogs, they've got barrels.
Then, what, and, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm not being argumentative at all, please don't take it that way. But what's the difference in having that in an ordinance and just having it as, um, uh, uh, discretionary adequate? If, if the enforcement is exactly the same? Because one says it's got a roof, it's got three sides, it's got a door. One says adequate. Both of them are living in a fifty-five gallon drum, facing the right way with no water standing in them. And both, um, animal officers are going out and determining, yes, that's adequate, no, it's not. And, and, just like with most all law enforcement, I think we need to give you guys that, that leeway and that discretion. Because if it's, if, if it's not adequate, in whose eyes? I don't think that needs to be in the board's eyes almost case by case. I think that's why we employ trained, certified enforcement folks that make that decision on our behalf. And I think that's the protection both ways, that, that, I mean, I, yeah, I would love to see stricter guidelines, but I think sometimes we paint ourselves in a box if we, if we put too much detail in there. Because I, I believe technically, if we didn't enforce a law that says it's gotta have a roof and a door on it, and, and somebody wanted to argue a case that an open container is not a door. It, it's an opening, it's around, you know, there's, where's the door? Because if you, if you look at the definition of a door, I don't think it would be a cut, a cut-off fifty-five gallon drum. So, um, at what point do we get in trouble for not enforcing, because it doesn't have a door on it?
And I think the, the, the difference is, is that it has solid sides, a solid roof, a solid floor. There is a back to it to prevent draft from flow, just flowing straight through it. Where it's like for the dog crate with the linoleum over it, I mean, it was protecting the dog from the rain. It wasn't protecting him from wind or anything else, whereas a barrel will.
And just to be clear, it's a good thing it's not my discretion, because that would not be out, any of it would not be out, but it'd need to be in the house, you know?
Yeah, well, and my dogs, my dogs are in the house, but...
Yeah.
Not everybody, we can't make them love them, you know?
That's true.
But, um, also, the barrels are good for pit bulls, because pit bulls will eat anything, any kind of shelter. They'll get on top of it and squish the plastic dog houses. Even, I've seen them tear apart igloo dog houses, which are supposed to be the strongest. But barrels, they can't destroy.
All right, thank you. Just see if we got anybody else out here, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else tonight?
Um, I'd like to ask another question, um, there, it, uh, says...
Come on, come on forward, we got, come on forward.
The ordinance, um, draw, it's, uh, says potentially dangerous and dangerous, but there's no definition of which is which. What is a potentially dangerous, and what's a dangerous dog? And there's no...
That is defined. It says potentially dangerous dogs as defined. And that is, that's very specific in code section, so we did just reference.
As defined.
Refer you directly to the code, because that statute's very specific.
Which one you're looking at?
Yes.
Page two.
Um, on the top of page two, potentially dangerous as defined.
OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-one.
See, duties shall not be... Pardon again?
It's got, it's got it listed defined in, and it's got where the definition of potentially dangerous is. It says a potentially dangerous dog means any dog as defined in, and then it gives you an OCGA, and then a number to refer, for the definition of a...
Okay, and a dangerous dog is?
Yeah, and then under fourteen twenty-four, it says as a dangerous register, uh, such owner's dog as a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog as classified under OCGA four dash eight dash twenty. Those code sections are very specific regarding dangerous or potentially dangerous. Those code sections are very specific regarding dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs. So it just references you directly to the, those code sections.
Okay, so you have to go to the state code to find that.
Yeah.
Then the, the leash thing, um, dog at large, um, what about in, um, the dog parks? It says, um, off-leash on property owner, uh, parking areas, um, limousine owner, um, but nothing about the dog parks.
All of our dog parks are fenced.
Yeah, all our dog parks are fenced. There's one right out here fenced in. One for small dogs, one for large dogs. Got all the play toys they want out there.
Well, the ordinance says, um, not in control, um, when they're falling, on a leash, when off to the property, um, is not in control, on a leash, went off the property of the owner, within the passenger, within the property of the owner or attended by the owner.
But in section B, it says confined means any building, pen or fenced area. So they would be confined. They would need to be on a, on a leash.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, the dogfighting thing, um, all states now have passed, uh, laws, you know, prohibiting being a spectator at dogfights also. And I guess that'd be the Sheriff's Department, um, arresting them. Yeah, Montana was the last state to enact that.
Sure.
But, okay.
We're about to run out of time. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one else tonight? Do we have some?
Animal Control.
Animal Control, you got anything?
Uh, I don't think so.
Commissioner Wood?
I believe we've covered a lot tonight. Um, probably need to take all that was said and mentioned in the comments and public, you know, input and the ACO off, you know, officers' input, and maybe have a short work session to kind of sum things up. And then, you know, make sure everything is, we've made good headway tonight.
Alright.
But, uh, maybe a short thirty-minute work session, see what the other commissioners think.
Alright, we'll have to do it, uh, we got a work session next week, so we'll have to be the follow-up meeting now.
Okay.
Alright, is there anything else for this work session tonight? Motion to adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn, Jerry.
Second?
Second.
On favor, right?
Aye.